Hearing. Thank you everybody for coming out this evening. Let me start by saying that we do have English to Spanish simultaneous interpretation services available for audience members and it's provided through headsets. There is a table in the back of the room, I was told. There, oh, it's right over there on that side. So that if you need interpretation services is right there. Tenemos interpretación del ingles al español disponible para la audiencia por medio de dispositivos auriculares. Están en la mesa al final ahí, a medio del cuarto. We have ten speakers delivering their testimony in Spanish. So after they read it, our staff will translate for the rest of the audience. And council members should have an English version in front of them. Also, just a reminder that this hearing is being recorded. It will be up on our website tomorrow. For the live streaming, turn to the council's Facebook page, Montgomery County Maryland Council. I do want to also just acknowledge very quickly and really thank my colleagues and council member Alornos in particular, who really had a really great suggestion. We were trying to figure out how to bring this particular hearing to the community. And a lot of work went into identifying the site and making it happen. To thank you for our central staff as well, for all their work to get this happening. So this is like an experiment and we'll keep doing these kinds of things moving forward. So this is a public hearing for the council to receive testimony on the Veers Mill Corridor Master Plan, which builds on the 1989 master plan for the communities of Kensington, Wheaton, the 1994 Aspen Hill Master Plan, and the 1992 North Bethesda Garrett Park Master Plan as amended. It also amends the general plan on wedges and corridors for the physical development of the Maryland-Washington Regional District in Montgomery and Prince George's Counties as amended. The 2013 county-wide transit corridors functional master plan, the master plan of highways and transitways as amended, as well as the bicycle master plan. The plan extends four linear miles between the city of Rockville and the 2012 Wheaton Central Business District and Vicinity Sector Plan boundary, and focuses on improved connectivity between transit and community uses, enhanced safety for all users of Veers Mill Road, and strategic redevelopment opportunities to strengthen existing neighborhoods. The plan makes recommendations for land use, zoning, transportation, parks, trails, and open space, the environment, and community facilities. A Fed Committee work session is tentatively scheduled for Monday, February 25th. Persons wishing to submit additional material for the council's consideration should do so before the close of business, February 8th. For everyone scheduled to testify today, please bring copies of your written testimony to the clerk at this time, and the clerk is on that side. She's raising her hand right there. And I do want to acknowledge that we do have Planning Board Member Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, who I know also has done a lot of outreach on this plan. And also want to acknowledge that although there probably will be some, you know, questions and thoughts that we might have, this is our opportunity to hear from you. And we do have a long list. So if we don't have questions, don't think that it's not because we're not interested in what you're saying. It's because we want to be respectful of your time. But there will obviously be a lot of opportunities during the Fed work session, et cetera, to dig much deeper into this. I, I, oh, and I'm sorry, Fed is the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development Committee. And just yesterday, we also hopped on a bus and did a tour of the entire master plan area. And that was very useful as well. So we're going to get started with our Group A. And that would be Greg Ossant, Casey Anderson, Arthur Klemmer, Rebecca Bonilla, Sonia Climaco, and Glenda Baquedano.
Good evening, Greg Ossant. Greg Ossant, testifying on behalf of County Executive Elrich. The executive is pleased to see that the Veers Mill Corridor Master Plan recognizes the diversity of the master plan area with its majority-minority demographic and varying range of income levels. He also applauds the plan's strong support of BRT. Executive wants to focus on two major elements of the plan. One is the importance of pedestrian cycling and auto safety along the corridor. The other is maintaining affordable housing opportunities for the hundreds of residents below 60% AMI. He has two major concerns. One is the significant cost of public safety projects recommended in the plan. The other is the likely displacement of current residents at a net loss of affordable housing for a population already burdened by rental housing costs. The 15 pedestrian incidents since 2015 that have seriously injured nine people and resulted in six fatalities is simply unacceptable. Executive wants to take steps to address this horrific situation. Given the county's fiscal constraints, the executive asks that you separately identify and prioritize short-term safety improvements so that we can begin to budget the most critically needed near-term solutions. The executive has also made clear that fundamental to any successful strategy to increase affordable housing is preservation of market rate affordable. He has tasked DHCA with developing innovative options for creating and maintaining housing affordability and family-sized apartments without assuming that older garden-style apartments that are naturally occurring affordable housing must be torn down and redeveloped. That is why he's concerned about the plan's recommendation to rezone the four multifamily properties in the Twin Brook District. These currently provide almost 1,000 rental units, including many two- and three-bedroom apartments with rents that range from a low of 746 for a studio to a high of 1,985 for a four-bedroom unit. And according to data provided by County Stat, which we provided, about 45% of the residents in the area are below the 200% of the federal government's poverty level, which is 51,500 for a family of four. And about half the residents are rent burdened. Viewed through a racial equity lens, this plan threatens to reduce the availability of affordable housing in an area where approximately 80% of the population is non-white. These concerns have raised questions for the executive. If you rezone these properties, how many units will the redeveloped sites provide? What is the net loss of number of units and how is that population served? How many residents will be displaced and never come back? And for the Twin Brook District, the plan calls for 15% MPDU, 5% market rate affordable units, which disappear after 20 years, and a minimum of 17 and 1/2 two- and three-bedroom units. There is not enough information to really understand what the results will be, although it most certainly will mean few truly affordable units for families. Concerning the missing middle, market must not override the need for maintaining it and expanding housing for the working poor. The plan is currently presented, threatens to reduce the existing stock of available family-sized apartments. Not only is there no requirement to replace the existing two-, three-, and four-bedroom units, there is no requirement to expand beyond what exists now. In other words, the plan threatens to increase the affordable housing crisis. The executive urges you to address the growing affordability cap by preserving the existing unit mix and rents, increasing the supply for the most vulnerable rural rental housing market.
Hello, thank you. We're going to practice with the timing, so maybe I'll keep, I'll look at you. You'll be the, Council Member Katz is going to be the official timekeeper today. That's an excellent role. Mr. Casey Anderson.
Hello, I'm Casey Anderson, Chair of the Montgomery County Planning Board. I'm here representing Natalie and the other Planning Board members. Thank you for coming, Natalie. I'll be brief, because you heard our summary the other day. I just wanted to point out that this county had seven major pedestrian collisions just in the last 48 hours. I think there were four in two hours yesterday on Connecticut Avenue. I think that speaks to what we all know as a growing problem with pedestrian safety. So many of them are on corridors like Veers Mill. And the Upper George Avenue Corridor, Middle Brook Road, and 118 in Germantown is another example. And we'll bring you a plan shortly that addresses some of those issues in that part of the county. But this is really a landmark plan, and we hope to set a precedent for addressing some of these pedestrian safety issues in our land use planning. As to affordable housing, we look forward to discussing with you and with the county executive's representatives how we can make sure that we ensure, preserve market rate affordable housing while increasing the housing supply, which is ultimately the only way that we can address the need for housing affordability in the context of long-term job growth and population growth in the county. So I'll leave it at that and look forward to hearing from members of the community.
Thank you very much. Arthur Klemmer. Rebecca Bonilla.
Muy buenas noches.
Good night.
Mi nombre es Rebecca Bonilla. He participado en el proyecto cívico latino liderado por las oficinas de la concejal Nancy Navarro. He recibido las clases cívicas antes. Quiero agradecer la oportunidad que me han brindado para venir a testificar y apoyar los esfuerzos de los miembros del consejo. Soy madre de cuatro hijos, de cuatro niños, y que estudian en las escuelas públicas del condado. Vivo muy cerca de la Veers Mill Road por más de 20 años. Estoy muy feliz de ir viendo los cambios que han recibido en nuestro sector, siempre para beneficio de todos los que recibimos. Aunque yo conduzco, siempre salgo a caminar con mis hijos pequeños, pero lo he dejado de hacer. Porque es muy inseguro para nosotros debido a que en algunas calles en nuestro vecindario no hay aceras para peatones, y es muy peligroso hacerlo tan cerca cuando pasan los vehículos. Quisiera que se pongan en práctica acciones para eliminar el índice de muertes por accidente de tránsito y mejorar la seguridad pedotonal. Hemos visto últimamente en las noticias tantos accidentes, muchas veces falta entre carros y peatones. También me gustaría que en los centros comerciales sobre la Veers Mill se señalezaran mejor los parqueos, y que también se incremente el número de áreas de estacionamiento para personas con necesidades especiales, incluyendo a madres embarazadas o con hijos. En el mall de Wheaton, hay parqueos designados para las personas con discapacidades y para madres embarazadas con familia. Nuevamente quiero agradecerles por la oportunidad de expresarme mis inquietudes. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
I'm going to read the testimony in English now. Good evening, my name is Rebecca Bonilla. I have participated in the Latino Civic Project led by Council President Navarro's office and received the civic curriculum. I'd first like to thank you for the opportunity that you've provided me to come and testify and support the efforts of the council members. I am the mother of four students who study in the county's public schools. I have lived very close to Veers Mill Road for more than 20 years. I'm very happy to see the changes that have been underway in our area, always for the benefit of all of us who reside there. Although I drive, I often go out to walk with my small children. However, I have stopped doing it because it's unsafe for us, thanks to the fact that on certain streets in our neighborhoods, there are no sidewalks for pedestrians, and it's dangerous to walk so close to passing cars. I would like for actions to be taken to eliminate the rate of deaths by transport-related accidents and to improve pedestrian safety. Recently, we have seen so many accidents involving cars and pedestrians, often fatal, in the news. I would also like to see better signage and more disabled parking spots in the shopping centers around Veers Mill, including for pregnant women and mothers with families. Thank you once again for allowing me to express my concerns.
Thank you, muchas gracias. Sonia Climaco.
Buenas noches.
Agarras el micrófono y lo puedes bajar, ajá.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Sonia Climaco. He participado en el proyecto cívico latino liderado por la oficina de la concejal Navarro. Y he recibido las clases cívicas. He vivido en la Veers Mill, en la 12116 de la Veers Mill Road, por más de cinco años. Soy madre de una niña que estudia en la escuela de la Veers Mill, y estoy testificando a favor de este plan. El plan maestro es de mucho beneficio para nuestra comunidad, especialmente para los que recibimos en esta área. Considerado que en este corredor todos saldremos beneficiados, especialmente los que hacemos uso de esta calle. Una de mis preocupaciones es durante estos años he observado que las paradas de los autobuses están muy distantes entre cada una, y en algunos casos no existe protección para los usuarios faltando pequeñas casetas para estar protegidos de la lluvia o nieve. Un ejemplo es la parada de la Veers Mill Road y la Randolph Road. Me gustaría que se incluyera en este proyecto construir más casetas, instalaran televisores para que informe el recorrido de los autobuses. He conversado con algunos padres de las escuelas que usan transporte público, y ellos quisieran que pasaran los buses con pequeños intervalos de tiempo. Por eso me parece fantástico que haya el servicio de buses rápido. Quiero agradecer a los concejales por su gestión en servicio y revitalización de este sector en beneficio de nuestros residentes. Muchas gracias.
My name is Sonia Climaco. I have participated in the Latino Civic Project led by Council President Navarro's office and received the civic curriculum. I have lived on Veers Mill Road for more than five years. I'm the mother of a student at Veers Mill Elementary School, and I'm here to testify in favor of this plan. The master plan greatly benefits our community, especially those of us who reside here. I'm confident that all of us stand to gain from this corridor, especially those of us who use this road. One of my concerns is that in recent years, I have observed that bus stops are far from each other. And in a few cases, there is no protection for users apart from small bus stands to protect against rain or snow. An example of this is the stop at Veers Mill and Randolph Road. I would like for the construction of more bus stands, as well as television screens that inform users of the bus routes, to be included in this project. I have spoken with other parents at my child's school who use public transport, and they would like for the buses to come by more frequently. For that reason, the addition of rapid transit buses seems like a fantastic idea to me. I would like to thank the council members for their development of new services and revitalization in this sector, to the benefit of us, the residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, muchas gracias. Glenda Baquedano.
Muy buenas noches, mi nombre es Glenda Baquedano. He participado con el proyecto cívico latino liderado por la oficina de la concejal Nancy Navarro. Esta estade decente de la Veers Mill Road por la más de cinco años. Estoy a favor de las recomendaciones del plan y en particular, agradezco su interés por mejorar las condiciones y necesidades de transporte de residentes de esta área. El desarrollo de este plan maestro sin duda nos dará una movilización más eficiente y segura. Desde hace aproximadamente cuatro años he podido observar que el tramo entre la intersección de Newport Mill Road y Veers Mill Road hasta la luz ubicada en la Clarin Road, se necesitan mejores señalizaciones sobre los límites de velocidad y la preocupación de pasos patonales, de ser posible cámaras y impongan las debidas secciones a los conductores agresivos, ya que las señales existentes muchas veces son ignoradas. Hay el menor tres escuelas y una de las iglesias con mucha gente en los alrededores, lo que implica movilizaciones de familiares completas que se ven afectadas en la actualidad. Es importante también evaluar la distancia, la paradas de autobuses, así como la construcción de casetas de espera. Debidamente es equipadas que excluya los horarios del servicio de transporte, sea por bandas electrónicas o televisores. Estoy muy feliz de ser parte de la comunidad de residentes del condado de Montgomery y de todos los cambios que se realizan para beneficios de nuestros, los residentes. Quiero agradecerles al consejo del condado de Montgomery por la oportunidad de expresar mis inquietudes frente a ustedes. Gracias, buenas noches.
Good evening, my name is Glenda Baquedano. I have participated in the Latino Civic Project led by Council President Navarro's office and received the civic curriculum. I have lived in the Connecticut Avenue Estates community adjacent to Veers Mill Road for more than five years. I am in favor of the recommendation of this plan, and in particular, I appreciate its aim of improving the conditions and availability of transport for residents in this area. This master plan's development will doubtless provide us with more efficient and secure mobility. For the past four years approximately, I have been able to observe that in the stretch between the intersection of Newport Mill Road and Veers Mill Road, until the light located at Claridge Road, there is a need for more signage related to speed limits and caution at pedestrian walkways. And if possible, for cameras that can impose the appropriate penalties on aggressive drivers, since the currently used signs are often ignored. There are at least three schools and one of the more frequented churches in the area, which means the mobility and safety of entire families is affected by the current status quo. It is also important to evaluate the distances between bus stops, as well as the construction of properly equipped bus stands, including the schedule of bus service, whether by electronic strips or television screens. I'm very happy to be part of the community of Montgomery County residents and happy about all the changes that are being made to benefit the residents. I would like to thank the Montgomery County Council for the opportunity to express my concerns before you.
Thank you so much, muchisima gracias. Did you have a comment, Council Member Reamer, who is the Chair of the Planning, Housing, and Economic Development, wants to make a comment?
Thank you, Council President Nancy Navarro. Just wanted to express appreciation for everyone's participation tonight and briefly to comment on the testimony from the county executive. Really appreciate his concern for the significant affordable communities, the multifamily buildings that are there today. I know a number of council members have expressed concerns about that, and I share those concerns as well. So we're going to take a real close look at that recommendation at the committee and come up with a better approach. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Group B, Eunice Morales, Martina Redding, Fannie Bernabe, Juan Gómez, Juan González Cárdenas, and Maria Ruiz. Eunice Morales.
Gracias, buenas noches. Ah, mi nombre es Eunice Morales. He participado también en el proyecto cívico latino liderado por la oficina de la concejal Nancy Navarro. Y recibido las clases cívicas también. Vivo en el vecindario por alrededor de más de diez años y vengo a dar mi testimonio a favor del plan maestro del corredor de Veers Mill, ya que considero que dará mucho beneficio a nuestras familias. Mis hijos estudian en la escuela de la Sergeant Shriver, y allí he conocido también a muchas madres que caminan con sus hijos desde Parkland Drive y otras calles cercanas. Enfrentando la dificultad de caminar, entramos sin aceras. Esto les obliga a ellas a hacerlo sobre el asfalto del vehicular. Como sabrán, el tráfico vehicular en esa calle es bastante pesado, y los vehículos pasan con alta velocidad, sobre todo en la pendiente bajando la Parkland Drive. Y aunque hay señalización, parece que los conductores no reducen la velocidad. Un servicio de transporte y de conectividad eficiente que tome en consideración los beneficios de los usuarios, en principal de los peatones, brindará mayor seguridad y confianza al momento de movilizarse, incluso con las carreolas de los niños pequeños. Considero también que es un buen momento para evaluar cosas tan básicas para mejorar la seguridad, como la iluminación de las calles y paradas de autobuses. Incluir información necesaria en cada parada de bus sobre las rutas y los tiempos de espera. Muchas gracias por permitirme expresar estas necesidades. Buenas noches.
My name is Eunice Morales. I have participated in the Latino Civic Project led by Council President Navarro's office and received the civic curriculum. I have lived for more than 10 years in the neighborhood adjacent to Veers Mill and Randolph Road. I have come to give testimony in favor of the Veers Mill Corridor Master Plan, as I believe it will provide many benefits to our families. My children study at Sergeant Shriver Elementary School, and there I have met many mothers who walk with their children from Parkland Drive and other nearby streets. And although there is signage, it seems that drivers don't reduce their speeds. An efficient transport service and connectivity that takes into consideration the benefits, in particular to pedestrians who use the sidewalks, will provide better security and confidence when walking. That includes strollers for younger children. I also believe that it is the right moment to evaluate things as simple for the improvement of safety as the lighting of streets and bus stops, and the inclusion of the necessary information at every bus stop about the routes and waiting times. Thank you for allowing me to express these concerns.
Thank you so much, muchas gracias. Martina Redding.
Muy buenas noches, mi nombre es Martina Redding. He participado en el proyecto cívico latino liderado por la oficina de la concejal Navarro. Y he recibido clases cívicas. Vivo en esta área de Veer Mills por más de seis años, y durante mucho tiempo trabajé en dos lugares en esa área, que están ubicados en el centro comercial, que está en el cruce de Veer Mill Road y la Randolph Road. En ese entonces, me di cuenta que muchos clientes se quejaban sobre los parqueos. Esto significa también que la demanda es mucha, y somos muchos los que vivimos en esta área. Considero que las áreas de los parqueos se deben de revisar, porque actualmente lucen muy mal diseñados y totalmente desnivelados. Esto, estoy contenta de que se realicen estos cambios, en especial en el área que está ubicado, el centro comercial, ya que los edificios son muy viejos y no lucen atractivos. Con la construcción de las recomendaciones de este plan, se verá una imagen muy bonita de estos centros comerciales y más asequible con un transporte rápido y eficiente. Apoyo totalmente la renovación de esta área, ya que la construcción será de mucho beneficio para todos. Muchas gracias, buenas noches.
My name is Martina Redding, and I have also participated in the Latino Civic Project led by Council President Navarro's office and received the civic curriculum. I have lived in the Veers Mill area for more than six years, and for a long time, I worked in two places of business located in the shopping center at the intersection of Veers Mill Road and Randolph Road. During that time, I realized that many clients complained about the parking lots. This means that the demand is high due to the high number of people who live in the area. I believe that the parking lot areas should be reviewed, because at the moment, they appear badly designed and totally uneven. I am happy that these changes are being made in these areas located in the shopping center now, now that the buildings have become old and unattractive. With the construction of the recommendations of this plan, these shopping centers will have a more attractive image and be more efficient and accessible to rapid transit. I totally support the renovation of this area, given that this construction will be very beneficial to all residents. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, muchas gracias. Fannie Bernabe.
Muy buenas noches. Quiero agradecer la oportunidad que se me ha dado de venir a testificar esta noche. Mi nombre es Fannie Bernabe. He participado en el proyecto cívico latino liderado por la oficina de la concejal Nancy Navarro y recibiendo las clases cívicas. Soy madre de tres hijos en edades escolares. Vivo en el área de Veers Mill y Conérico Avenue. La implementación de este plan traerá mejor seguridad vehicular, de bicicletas, y en especial peatonal, lo que será de mucho beneficio, ya que estas calles son muy transitadas, y es muy importante que se desplieguen proyectos que tomen en cuenta peatones y bicicletas. En estos últimos años, hemos visto muchos accidentes fatales, ocasionados por conductores agresivos, los cuales no tienen precaución al conducir con los peatones. Es importante que en esta calle se construyan áreas para peatones y carriles solamente para el uso de bicicletas. He observado que personas que caminan o usan bicicletas están arriesgando su vida al cruzar por las avenidas principales o lo hacen en medio de las carreteras, sobre todo cuando hay exceso de acumulación de nieve y no hay áreas seguras para caminar. Quisiera que se considere tener el uso de bicicletas para ir a las estaciones de metro más cercanas al corredor. Quisiera también se considera instalar cámaras de reducción de velocidad, semáforos, y más seguridad para los peatones, y así evitar accidentes fatales. De antemano, agradezco sus consideraciones. Gracias.
Good evening, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to come and testify tonight. My name is Fannie Bernabe. I have participated in the Latino Civic Project led by Council President Navarro's office and received the civic curriculum. I'm the mother of three school-aged children, and I live in the area of Veers Mill Road and Connecticut Avenue. The implementation of this plan will bring better safety conditions for vehicles, bicycles, and especially pedestrians, all of which would be extremely beneficial
In the past years, we have seen many fatal accidents caused by aggressive drivers, who display no caution or concern in driving near pedestrians. It is important that sidewalks and exclusive bicycle paths be constructed along this street. I have observed that people who walk or use bicycles are risking their lives when they cross by the designated walkways or in the middle of the street, which happens above all when there is an accumulation of snow and fewer safe walking areas. I would like there to be consideration for the use of bicycles to get to the metro stations closest to the corridor. I would also like there to be consideration about installing cameras to reduce drivers' speed, traffic lights, and more security for pedestrians. That way, we can avoid fatal accidents. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Muchisima gracias. Juan Gómez?
Sí, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
First of all, I want to thank you for inviting me. I have lived in the area for 3 years. I'm very happy in my area. What I do have a little worry is that it has been 2 years since we invited you. We were invited to a meeting of the Council and told us that our houses were going to be demolished and that we were going to build new buildings. I'm sorry for my reluctance. I want to know how is this process? They invited us from the side of the town.
He just wanted to translate for anyone else. What he said is that he lives here. He's been living in the Veers Mill Road for the past 3 years?
3 years, yeah.
3 years. And recently, a year ago, he was invited to a meeting in which they were told that their houses were to be sold.
Yeah, destroyed.
They would have to sell their houses.
Yes.
And there has been no other update since then. So now they're worried.
Right, he asked the question. He wanted to know the status of that. And I asked, "Who invited you to this meeting?" And you said, "The county"?
Yes, yes. The side of the town, yes. I would like to know how is this process? If it will be carried out or not, because they didn't tell us anything else.
What we can do is take their contact information to investigate who invited them, because we don't have any information about any proposal to demolish houses or replace anything. So I would like to have his contact information to find out exactly what was that meeting about, because we don't have any particular information about proposals to demolish homes.
Many American blacks told us that we needed our senators to tell us that.
And many of his neighbors were saying, like, they gathered together and said that they needed their senators to come and tell them that they would have to sell their houses.
Yes, we're not entirely certain of that proposal, but with great pleasure, we can investigate. So further ahead, what we can do is take their information and investigate to see what it was about.
Thank you for the invitation.
Of course, it is.
You can't be the first or the last.
No, the doors are always open.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I said that we would, of course, take his contact information and get to the bottom of what exactly was that proposal that he was referring to. Juan González Cárdenas?
Muy buenas noches. My name is Juan González Cárdenas. I live in 4200 Sampson Road, Silver Spring. Muy buenas noches. During I moved to this direction in 1995. And I live until the present day, I'm around 33 years. During those years, many members of the Latin community in the area. But now, there has been a large percentage of Latinos who use the public transport to move to their jobs and go back to their homes. Such as the case of my brother, Óscar Omar Rivas. The only difference is that my brother left home to buy his ride-on card and never returned. The police officer knocked on my door last June to tell me that my brother was killed at the intersection of Veers Mill Road and Connecticut Avenue. My brother had died when he was attacked by a few blocks or meters from my house in the intersection of the Veers Mill Road and the Conérico Avenue. Omar was 55 years old and left two children. I stayed alone with my brother, and the culprit continues to enjoy freedom until today. Authorities haven't been able to determine who attacked my brother or how it happened. The place where he was found is a very poor area with low traffic. The intersection is incredible. Even though the intersection is so big, there are no cameras that record what happened there. So I ask you to make sure that the roads are safe and that the vehicles are monitored in this way, so that the vehicles and drivers are safe. Especially, that they monitor each movement and report to the responsible drivers. My brother won't return home, but I hope his death will remain impune and will serve to create changes in my community. It is necessary to stop counting every centime that you earn and start counting the lost lives. Please, establish better roads and bridges and construct bridges for pedestrians. On the streets of Beres Mill Road, there are less signaling and lighting. It is necessary to have more policemen who supervise the drivers and ensure they comply with the laws. We need to make sure that the traffic is visible and not concealed.
Mr. Cárdenas? Thank you for coming this evening. I apologize for your loss. And we will take very seriously everything that is included in this plan to alleviate and improve these conditions. Don't worry. Thank you so much for being here this evening.
Good evening. My name is Juan González Cárdenas. And I live in Sampson Road in Silver Springs since 1999. When I first moved here, there were not many members of the Latino community in the area, but now there are. A large percentage of those Latino residents use public transportation to go to their jobs and come back home, as it was in the case of my brother, Óscar Omar Rivas. With the only difference that my brother left home to buy his ride-on card and never came back. A police officer knocked on my door last June to tell me that my brother was killed at the intersection of Veers Mill Road and Connecticut Avenue. Omar was 55 years old. Now, his two children have no father, and I'm left without my brother. Whoever killed him continues to enjoy his or her freedom. To this day, authorities have not been able to determine who killed my brother or how it happened. The place where his body was found is an area without lighting and high vehicular and pedestrian traffic. Incredibly, there are no cameras that could record what happened there. So beyond asking, I am demanding an improvement on this street so that it is safe for pedestrians and drivers. It is imperative that recording cameras be installed so they can record every incident to hold responsible drivers accountable. My brother is never coming back home, but I hope that his death will not go unpunished and that it will help to generate changes in my community. You need to stop counting every centime you save and start counting lost lives. Please, establish better pedestrian crossing areas. Build bridges for easy access for those who use public transportation. Invest in lighting along this corridor and put security and speed cameras. Signs and lights are missing in the surrounding streets of Veers Mill Road. And there is a need for more police officers to supervise drivers and ensure that they comply with traffic laws. We need traffic signals to be visible and not hidden.
Muchisima gracias. Thank you, Mr. Cárdenas. Maria Ruiz?
Buenas noches. My name is Maria Ruiz. Thank you for the invitation. I'm a little unhealthy. I'm going to put my son to read his testimony. But I appreciate you so much. And I've been living in this area for over 30 years.
Her name is Maria. And she's not feeling good. She's sick. So she asked her son to read her testimony for her.
All right.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Maria Ruiz. I've lived on Veers Mill Road for more than 30 years. My neighborhood has changed a lot since we bought the house. Before, it was an ideal place to start a family and have a quiet life. Development has increased not only the number of residents, but also the vehicular traffic. Unfortunately, the infrastructure area remains the same as it was 30 years ago. Veers Mill Road has a high volume of vehicular traffic, but little accessibility for those who do not have cars. It worries me to see every time I drive how people cross the middle of the street to catch the public transportation and risk their lives. The problem is that improved dense of those people can also affect my life and those of my family. It is necessary for the county to update the conditions on the street so that all of us who use it are safe. For that reason, I would like to ask to make a pedestrian bridge or more crossroads at the intersection of Broadwood Drive and Veers Mill Road. This corner is very busy and dangerous. I also would like to ask you to put more lighting along the street so we can see people when they're crossing at night. I would like to ask you to increase the police surveillance. Cars are parked on the street, are being vandalized at night. A greater police presence would help a lot to prevent this from happening. Finally, I think it is important to put a physical barrier between the street and the houses. It is important that we are safe in our homes and that no drunk driver will crash into our house. Creating a safe environment must be the main reason for this plan. I'm asking you to approve it, to start making changes as soon as possible. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you so much. Muchisima gracias, Mrs. Ruiz. You may go. Okay, so now to Group C. Noemi Benitez, Stephen Chavers, C. Robert Darmpel, Randall Luttenberg, Tina Slater, Carolyn Gupta.
Buenas noches. My name is Noemi Benitez. I live in the 12304 of the Veers Mill for 31 years. I want to give my opinion about the plan of improvement of the street of Veers Mill. I'm not against construction of bridges, always and whenever they don't affect anyone and don't force any resident to sell their house. I don't think a pedestrian bridge will help much, because pedestrians do not really use them. I believe that more pedestrian crossing areas should be designated instead. I believe that the county needs to enact laws that sanction pedestrians who are using their cellphones while on public roads. Also, it is extremely important that police officers constantly patrol our one-way streets, because there are many drivers who do not respect traffic laws and go in the opposite direction, endangering the safety of other drivers and residents. I understand that this improvement planned focuses on certain areas of the Veers Mill Corridor, but I think that a comprehensive plan that involves all those aspects of social welfare in this community is also important. I would like you to increase surveillance in public areas, mainly in parks. Authorities should make sure that the laws regarding throwing garbage outdoors are respected. We need more signs in several languages that indicate the rules and sanctions that apply in the area. It is necessary to increase the number of garbage bins in our streets. Also, for health concerns issues, I would like you to increase the garbage truck to pass at least 2 days a week. It currently passes 1 day a week, resulting I think it's the micro-hundred battery. It currently passes 2 days a week? No, it currently passes 1 day a week, resulting in a lot of accumulation of garbage that attracts rats and represents danger to our well-being. On the other hand, I believe that public schools should make an extra effort so that parents understand the importance of getting involved in the education of their children. Parents should be focused on the intellectual growth of their children and attend meetings and school activities of children to encourage them. I also think that they should approve you should enact a law that establishes a specific age in which parents can buy a cellphone to their children. It is a way to ensure that our children are active. en la que los padres puedan comprarle un celular a sus hijos. Es una manera de asegurar que nuestros niños sean activos, disfruten su infancia y estudian. Y por último, deseo de todo corazón que se vuelvan a implementar las oraciones en las escuelas porque la oración trae mucha protección y esa es la mejor solución para poner un alto a los tiroteos y a las delincencias. Necesitamos cambios. Gracias.
Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias, señora.
Good evening. I am Noemi Benítez and I would like to share my opinion about the Veresmil Corridor Master Plan. I am not against building bridges as long as no one is affected and no residents are forced to sell their houses. I do not think that pedestrian pedestrian bridges will help much because pedestrians do not really use them. I believe that more pedestrian crossing areas should be designated instead. I believe that the county needs to enact laws that sanction pedestrians who are using their cell phones while on public roads. Also, it is extremely important that police officers constantly patrol our one-way streets because there are many drivers who do not respect traffic laws and go in the opposite direction endangering the safety of other drivers and residents. I understand that this improvement plan plan focuses focuses on certain areas of the Veresmil Corridor, but I think that a comprehensive plan that involves all those aspects of social welfare in this community is also important. I would like to I would like you to increase surveillance in public areas and mainly in parks. Authorities should make sure that the laws regarding throwing garbage outdoors are respected. We need more signs in several languages that indicate the rules and sanctions that apply in the area. It is necessary to increase the number of garbage bins in our streets. Also, for health health concerns issues, for health concerns issues, I would like to I would like you to I would like the increase of garbage truck to pass, I would like the garbage truck to pass at least two days a week. It currently passes one day a week resulting, I think it's the micro battery. It currently passes two days a week. No, it currently passes one day a week resulting in a lot of accumulation of garbage that attracts rats and represents danger danger to our well-being. On the other hand, I believe that public schools should make an extra effort to so that parents understand the importance of getting involved in the education of their childrens. Parents should be focused on the intellectual growth of their children and attend and attend meetings and school activities of children to encourage them. I also think that they should that they should approve, you should you should enact a law that establishes a specific age in which parents can buy a cellphone to their children. It is a way to ensure that our childrens are active, enjoy their childhood and study. And finally, I wish with all my heart that prayer be reinstated in schools because prayer brings a lot of protection to our children and communities. This is the best solution to stop shootings and crime. We need changes.
Thank you. Stephen Chavers?
Yes.
No? C. Robert Darrimple.
I'm Bob Dalrimple. I'm an attorney with the law firm, Milino's and Blocker. I'm here this evening on behalf of Halpine Park LLC, which is a group of individuals who have owned the Halpine View Apartments for several decades now. Halpine View Apartments is on thirty-seven acres. It's improved with five hundred and sixty or so garden-style apartments. And over the last sixty years or so, it's been a very successful rental community in this part of Montgomery County. I would just note as a personal matter, I was born and raised in this area, so I have a strong vested interest in it as well. Notice I didn't say I grew up in this area because I many would say I haven't grown up yet. While the property has served the community well for the last several decades, the reality is that over the life of this master plan, there are some redevelopment changes that are going to need to be made to the property. And we were challenged by the Planning Board during the Planning Board's deliberations on the plan to work with staff to arrive upon a redevelopment strategy that would address especially the affordable housing issues in this area. And at page one hundred of the draft plan, you'll see a summary of the results of that. And so we are in support of the draft plan and the strategies that have evolved so far. And we look forward to working with you as we move forward. I want to spend the rest of my time focusing on one issue that is not yet covered, at least to our satisfaction, in the plan. And in your letter, you'll see that there's a blue strip of land that goes through the middle of the Halpine View Apartments. And that was a strip of land that was deeded by the owners of this property at no consideration back in the nineteen sixties for Aspen Hill Road Extended, which is not going to happen. Aspen Hill would have to go through the cemetery and the park, and everybody agrees that there's just no possibility for that. So we'd like the property returned and redeveloped as part of this property. And in return, we're offering to provide thirty percent MPDUs off of the density that would come from this right of way. So it was provided sixty years ago at no cost. We'd like it back now, but we'd like to contribute some additional affordable housing, which I think is consistent consistent with the disposition goals of the county. So we are asking that the master plan specifically suggests that this property be returned to private use and redeveloped in conjunction with the redevelopment of Halpine View and that the that it also captures the the offer for the affordable housing. Again, this is all put in in the letter. I won't take up any more of your time.
Thank you so much. Your time is up and we will consider your written testimony.
Good thing I'm not taking up any more of your time then.
Thank you. Randall Luttenberg.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. My name is Randall Luttenberg and I'm speaking to you tonight as a board member of the Rock Creek Palisades Citizens Association. We represent seventeen hundred homes in District Four right along Veresmil Road, south of the road on both sides of Newport Mill Road and the area defined by the triangle of Veresmil University and Connecticut. We have three schools in our boundaries: Rockview Elementary School and Newport Mill Middle School and Einstein High School. Our neighborhood is defined by these three state highways and we hope that this master plan will soon be followed by a comprehensive review of the interaction of all of these corridors because there's several issues that we need to be addressed there. But I'm here tonight to testify in support of the draft plan proposal sections 2.5 Transportation and 2.7 Environment. These sections encompass the kind of changes that will have the greatest impact for good or ill on the future of our community and the surrounding areas. And we urge you not only to adopt these parts of the master plan but to consider these specific proposals for safe pedestrian and bicycle access to and along Veresmil Road, traffic calming, and attention to effective tree cover and storm management as necessary and essential to the health of our community and prosperity and well-being of our neighbors. Our neighbors are dying in pedestrian accidents. We support the goals of the Vision Zero Initiative and our Neighborhood Association participates in the No More Dead Pedestrians Coalition. And we believe that these changes can transform this road from a dangerous barrier that separates neighbors into an important link for our community to the rest of the world. I have two sons ages twelve and fourteen, and I want them to live like I did at their age, exploring their world and traveling as far as they can on their bicycles and looking around and visiting their friends and not relying on me for their transportation. But our local road network discourages this. And to illustrate that, we live a mile from the intersection of University Boulevard and Veresmil Road, but it might as well be five or ten miles because there is no safe and practical way for us to walk or bicycle to the Wheaton Business District, an area that includes shops and grocery stores and wonderful restaurants and a movie theater and a shopping mall and all of these businesses that we would patronize if we only could. But once we get in our car, there's no incentive to stay in the local area, so there's no advantage to the local businesses. My concern and our concern is the opportunities for independent living and exploration that are lost to our children and our elderly and anyone without access to a car because of the design of these roads. Furthermore, when you add the economic effects that access to transportation and transit has, it measures, it contributes measurably to the economic well-being of our area. And I would also point out that an important aspect of affordable housing is connecting houses to employment. It is imperative that the same standards that the plan applies to Veresmil Road also apply to the intersecting roads. So we urge that if the Montgomery, you know, if the Montgomery East Parkway Extension proceeds, be modified to the standards of this plan as well as Connecticut Avenue. There's many issues between Denfield and Veresmil Road that are also just as dangerous and there's no sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Luttenberg. We will consider the rest of your written testimony. Thank you so much. Tina Slater.
Good evening. I'm Tina Slater, Transportation Chair of Montgomery County Sierra Club, and I'm standing in for Dave Sears, who's traveling. He's our chair. Overall, we're pleased and impressed with the current draft of this important plan. Sierra Club's starting point when we review plans is how will this plan help address climate change, which is the number one environmental issue facing our community and planet. In Montgomery County, one important way to address climate change is to work hard to give residents and workers more and better opportunities to get to where they need and want to go without getting in a car and driving. This plan is consistent with that approach. The stated transportation goals are commendable: a safe, efficient, and comfortable, complete street that serves pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, and motorists. We applaud the focus on improving pedestrian and bike infrastructure, which is critical as we've heard tonight. We urge the council to bring BRT to Veresmil Road as quickly as possible and to be sure that BRT includes a dedicated lane because without that, the R for rapid is kind of false advertising. A truly rapid BRT is the core of the plan, and without it, the rest of the plan falls apart. We know that this corridor is a state highway and thus SHA will need to be a willing partner in several aspects of the plan. Please let Sierra Club know where you think we might be helpful in urging SHA to do the right things to ensure the plan's success. A second important way that the plan can address climate change is to take full advantage of transit stations as locations for mixed-use, mixed-income, attractive, high-density neighborhoods. But we think the plan may be a little timid. Don't get us wrong, we're not suggesting Bethesda-level densities at Veresmil and Randolph, but we would like the county to take full advantage of the investment in BRT by providing many more BRT customers who can easily walk to these stations. Higher-density neighborhoods at each of the six BRT stations will also make great locations for affordable housing, MPDUs, ADUs, and other units, enabling many lower-income families to have access to very first-rate transit. Speaking of housing, we applaud the plan's emphasis on preservation of existing market-rate housing. This is a good plan. We think it could be made even better with a push for higher-density neighborhoods within walking distance of the six BRT stations. And a truly rapid BRT is the core of the plan. Let's see if we can get that designed and in place ASAP. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Carolyn Gupta.
My name is Carolyn Gupta. I'm with the Connecticut Avenue State Civic Association. We consist over a thousand homes boarding Randolph Road, Connecticut Avenue, Clearridge Road, a portion of Henderson Avenue, and Veresmil Road. Also present here is Ms. Joyce Thomas, who's president of Montclair Manor Homeowners Association. Her community consists of sixty-four townhouses located on Clearridge Court and Veresmil Road. Both communities consist of diverse, moderate working class. Many of the residents utilize the metro and ride-on-bus services as well as traveling on Veresmil Road frequently. The protective plan for Veresmil Road is for an increase in transit ridership with the bus rapid transit and for beautification along Veresmil Road, such as planting street trees and placing public art at the BRT shelters. These suggestions are helpful, however, there are sufficient bus shelters on Veresmil Road, and building BRT shelters would affect people's, would affect neighbors' homes that are located on Veresmil Road. Also, the state highway administration is not providing enough maintenance of the existing bus shelters. For example, over the years, on snow days, even this last month, bus shelters are shoveled, but the sidewalks leading to the bus shelters on MD 5B6 between Connecticut Avenue and Clearridge Road were not. Thus, it is a dangerous safety hazard. There are rampant violations of those placing unauthorized business cards, flyers, and ads. These taped ads and eyesore-free newspaper stands are defacing the bus shelters. We agree that the good aesthetics are pleasing to the eye, but our communities are constantly reminding the state highway administration to mow the lawn, trim the overhead tree branches to make visibility for motorists, weed whack and pick up the trash, and yard debris on Veresmil Road between Clearridge and Connecticut Avenue. What's the point of adding new features if the existing enhancements are not maintained properly? The idea of taking away one lane going east and one lane going west on Veresmil Road lends this approach to traffic congestion, which breaks down the smooth flow of traffic. Thinking that having a BRT would increase transit ridership may be a good idea, but those who are using their own vehicles in our neighborhoods are using them not only to go to work but to take their babies to daycare and their children to school or they're going to and from doctor's appointments. In our neighborhood, the Veresmil Road has the Q1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and the C4 Metro buses as well as the Rhino buses, number thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-eight, and forty-eight. Veresmil Road is mostly residential. It would be more feasible to have BRTs on such state roads as Georgia Avenue, which has four metro stations as well as two hospitals. Georgia Avenue has many more commercial shops than Veresmil Road. I can also testify the Y buses on Georgia Avenue, especially during rush hour, could be standing room going north or south. On page twenty-eight of the MCN PPC's April booklet, it focuses on Vision Zero.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you so much. Yes, that's time up. Thank you so much. We'll read the rest of your testimony. Really appreciate it. Councilmember Rice, I think, can I comment? No? Oh, okay. We just, oh, okay. So Councilmember, yeah, Councilmember Rice, want to know if there was somebody from SHA present tonight? Is there somebody here from State Highway? Doesn't look like.
Yes. One of the things that I think is just incredibly important, Madam President, is that with a lot of these being our state highways that are going to be instrumental in terms of us really creating the change that you're talking about and including some of the maintenance, I know that our staff is going to be reporting. We in my district have been actively reporting every single month issues that we hear from the community to SHA and ask them for follow-up. And so I know that we're going to be doing the same thing here in this instance. We need to have a better relationship between State Highway and they need to be actively involved in terms of many of the maintenance issues that we've talked about beyond just the safety issues. And so I thank you for bringing up those issues about maintenance because those are incredibly important as well in addition to the safety overhauls that we need to do to these roads as well. So thank you for that. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. And that's a constant work in progress and we continue to address that. So now we're on to Group D. Stephanie Rudman, Joseph Linett, David Helms, Allison Gillespie, Peter Gray, Suzanne Casa. Ms. Rudman.
Good evening, Council, President Navarro, and members of the council. My name is Stephanie Rudman and I'm testifying on behalf of Montgomery Housing Partnership, the largest nonprofit housing developer in Montgomery County. MHP is the developer of Halpine Hamlet Apartments, a community of sixty-seven mainly affordable one- and two-bedroom apartments located just off Twinbrook Parkway. We support the Planning Board's recommendation to rezone our property. While we have no near-term plans to redevelop the property, several other market-affordable housing communities north of ours in the Twinbrook District may wish to demolish and redevelop sooner rather than later. A recent study released by the Planning Department provides new insights into what could happen if these properties are redeveloped. While redevelopment of existing multifamily buildings has been rare in the last twenty-five years, demolition and redevelopment by market-rate developers does tend to result in a loss of affordable housing units. When affordable housing developers such as MHP or HOC are involved and when the county has found county-owned land, additional affordable housing units have been developed to offset what would otherwise be a reduction in affordable housing from redevelopment. By upzoning the garden-style apartments for redevelopment, the affordability of rental housing in the Twinbrook Corridor will be lost if there is not a concerted effort to preserve or replace them. To this extent, to the extent that the sector plan is incentivizing redevelopment along this corridor, the plan should ensure a one-for-one replacement of the potential loss of market-rate affordable housing. This can be done by the county aggressively seeking to identify county-owned sites where affordable housing can be located in this plan. For example, the plan contemplates the redevelopment of the Department of Recreation's administrative offices near the intersection of Veresmil and Randolph Road, once the department relocates to the county office building that's currently under construction in downtown Wheaton. However, under the design guidance, the plan recommends a site for attached single-family building types or stacked townhouses to transition to adjacent single-family neighborhoods. Any redevelopment of the property should be compatible with the existing neighborhood, but we would put forward that mid-rise multifamily construction is also appropriate for the site and can be configured such that it is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. We therefore request that the design guidance be amended to give equal consideration to multifamily housing. Another county-owned property which the council should target for affordable housing is the land surrounding this Holiday Park Senior Center. The plan recommends that the zoning remain at R60 or detached single-family housing. We believe that the surface parking lots surrounding the senior center are a prime opportunity for housing, especially senior housing, given its immediate adjacency to this senior center. Notwithstanding the fact that solar canopies were constructed on the parking lot two years ago, the county could accomplish both its housing and sustainability goals by utilizing surface parking lots for housing.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you so much, Ms. Rudman.
With solar on the rooftop.
We will read the rest of your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for those suggestions. Joseph Linett.
I'm Joe Linett. I am a member of Bullis Tract LLC, a family-owned entity trading as Rock Creek Woods Apartment, which is a number of families that have built and owned this property consistently since nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-six. Rock Creek Woods is a two-hundred-and-seventy-unit garden apartment project at the northern gateway of the Veresmil Corridor. I appear tonight to voice our support for the recommendation of the Montgomery County Planning Board to rezone our property to CRT with an FAR 1.25. Rock Creek Woods is located on two parcels with little more than twelve acres on the southeast and southwest corners of Twinbrook Parkway and Veresmil Road. The property is immediately adjacent to the proposed BRT station in the Twinbrook area and the southern portion of our property is within three-quarters of a mile of the Twinbrook Metro Station. The project consists of nine garden apartment projects, garden apartment buildings constructed in the mid-nineteen sixties. The land is encumbered with the two twin brooks that Twinbrook Parkway is named after. These twin brooks run in box culverts underneath the project, bisecting it, which presents a number of challenges for our project here. And the eastern portion of our property has a very difficult and sharply rolling terrain. The apartment buildings and mechanical systems at this sixty-year-old project are now nearing the end of their useful life, and the apartment units themselves are approaching the point of functional obsolescence. The supporting utility infrastructure of the project, most notably its aging water and sewer lines, are a frequent source of service interruptions. Despite substantial capital expenditures for the, in recent years, the entirety of the project's water and sewer lines are now in the entirety of the project's water and sewer lines are now in need of replacement. Although the project's been well-maintained, it is lacking in modern market necessities and amenities. Among other matters, the project lacks ADA accessibility, modern fire code protection, energy-efficient construction, building security, stormwater management, and forest conservation protections. And because of the design and age of this nineteen-sixties project, the buildings and their apartment units cannot be practically or physically retrofitted to modern standards. In addition, because this project predates the MPDU laws, none of the two-hundred-and-seventy units are MPDUs. The recommendations of the planning board recognize that this project cannot be economically redeveloped as a multifamily project if the land is limited to its existing density. In the absence of redevelopment, this project, like others, will gradually decline into obsolescence and disrepair, depriving residents of the ADA accessibility, MPDUs, fire code protections, and other modern amenities. In recognition of the project's physical constraints and its close proximity to public transportation--
Thank you, Mr. Linett. Thank you so much. We will consider the rest of your written testimony.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David Helms.
Thank you. My name is Dave Helms. I'm with Atomic Peddlers. About three thousand folks in our bicycle club, there we ride across Maryland, Virginia, DC. Just want to recall what the council did a couple of years ago. Who said this? "Every time I drive past that crosswalk, my stomach tightens. It's dangerous." Yes, sir. "It's extraordinarily dangerous." Councilmember Navarro. "The crossing at Veers Mill and Turkey Branch Parkway is undeniable, undeniably dangerous." The entire, the entire council. That was a letter to the state highway in MDOT. Why were you writing about that? Well, this is, I took this picture. I was just going through there. This happens a lot. It was like bumper cars, you know, at the crossing. This is, this is Visa.
S2.
She was nineteen. She was crossing with her mother at Parkland. She was killed as she got off the bus and crossed the road. She went to Blair. As I made these copies at Kinko's, the staff that assisted me started crying because she, he knew her. She was from Ethiopia. This is Frank Towers. He lived in the neighborhood. He was nineteen years old. He was crossing on his bicycle, on his Christmas bicycle. He got three, three days before. He suffered and was killed by a multi-threat, which is the first traffic stopped, the others did not. The council started to engage at this point. I know Councilmember Navarro certainly did. This is, this is Oscar Azario. He's thirty-one. He was from Columbia. He died in July seventeenth, twenty sixteen. That's when the council went into high gear and really got furious with, with the state. The state highway was MDOT and wrote a series of, of letters to the state, and we made progress. And I think that your efforts have yielded results at the crossing, and thank you for that. But we can't stop. You can't stop now. This, you know, we can't end it there just because we got a crossing signal. It's time to continue. The Veers Mill Corridor is, is a result, a direct result of what you voted on with Vision Zero and, and these deaths. So, it's time to move forward and put, if you want to, if you want to talk about equity, if you want to talk about making these people whole, please support this plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that, and please note that as we were doing our tour yesterday, actually, I know that one of the recommendations of the plan is to put a, you know, completely functional light there, because even after so much advocacy, to get that particular, you know, hawk's signal, we're still realizing that the compliance is very low. We're going to be pushing that really hard, and I think that at least the latest meetings with SHA, you know, there seems to be a renewed spirit of wanting to collaborate. And that has to be a very short-term thing that we do, you know, immediately. But I really do appreciate you being here this evening, reminding us. Yes.
I just want to thank you, David Helms, for the work you've done to promote safety in this corridor. There's many community advocates here tonight, and none of this changes without you. And you've been really leading this effort in so many ways, so I just want to thank you for that.
Okay. Allison Gillespie.
Good evening, members of council. I'm here tonight because this corridor is a big part of my family's life. I've read the Veers Mill Master Plan in detail and give it my enthusiastic support. Both of my kids are students at Albert Einstein High School on Newport Mill Road and ride school buses or walk along Veers Mill to catch a Womata bus every day. They often walk or ride buses to visit friends after school or go hang out in Wheaton. And I really love Einstein High School, but I worry about my kids and their friends. Veers Mill was not designed to handle modern urban life. It's a huge river of speedy and irate drivers. One of the biggest problems is that anyone not in a car is literally marginalized and put in danger at the side of the road due to poor planning back in the fifties and sixties. Incorporating Vision Zero into Veers Mill makes so much sense and will serve to uplift and improve the life of our entire community. I love that the plan seeks to transform the highway into a place where humans aren't just dodging traffic or seen as an annoyance, but rather as an essential part of the road's function. I look for a future where bus riders, pedestrians, bicyclists, and cars can coexist in a safe and pleasant way, and I'm super excited about what's in the plan to make that a reality. There are currently so many places where sidewalks and crosswalks just don't exist in this corridor. There are long stretches where sad little trails have been carved into the grass by the feet of hundreds of people trying to safely make their way north or south along the shoulder on Veers Mill. When students from Einstein's track team run, they often must run along the roads mapped out in this plan. It makes me cringe to watch these young, healthy, energetic kids run so close to traffic. But they really should be able to do what every, what kids do at so many other county schools effortlessly, and that is train to compete in the neighborhoods where they live. And there should be no reason why walking to school for any age involves intermingling with cars going forty to sixty miles per hour. That's a recipe for death. The current design of the road encourages those speeds and bad behavior due to its shape and engineering. We can and should do better. More trees, more exercise, more isolation, or, excuse me, less isolation due to enhanced connectedness. I'd love to see this neighborhood continue to be relevant and desirable to young families and safe for families in future decades. MCPS has implemented many academic improvements at Einstein, and now it is one of the most popular choices for the Down County consortia, a real popular school and a real success story. But visiting the school for the first time gives parents a real moment of pause. The road there is so apparently unsafe and outdated. You really have to take a leap of faith and believe that this place will give your kids a safe, modern education. I'm grateful for the time and attention that Planning Office put into this document. I hope you will vote to approve, and I hope it will be quickly implemented. Thanks again for the chance to speak.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. Peter Gray.
It's a tough act to follow. Council President and members of the council, I'm Peter Gray, and I represent the Washington Area Bicycle Association and its fifteen hundred members and thousands of other supporters in Montgomery County. I want the council to know that WABA enthusiastically supports the proposed Veers Mill Master Plan and urges the council to approve the plan in its entirety. The plan before you is a significant step forward towards implementing the county's Vision Zero plan, which will enable the county to achieve its goal of zero fatalities and zero serious injuries due to crashes between cars and pedestrians and bicyclists. Most importantly, this is the first master plan that places Vision Zero principles at its core and has specific recommendations that will act to re-engineer the busy state highway that Veers Mill is today into a road which will accommodate the needs of residents who bike, or walk, or take public transportation along this corridor. Making it safe to use alternatives to cars is key to reducing traffic fatalities and serious injuries. Specifically, the plan has recommendations like Number Fifteen in the short-term recommendations, quote, "improve the Matthew Hudson Trail Crossing by providing a protected crossing that eliminates conflicts and a direct crosswalk connection and additional pedestrian-scale lighting." Kind of the thing that Dave Helms is focusing on just recently. Another recommendation would improve, would develop, quote, "an interim continuous bike network along Veers Mill Road and parallel streets to provide a connection between existing transit and community uses." That would clearly make it safer for bicyclists to travel through this corridor. The plan also calls for putting in more sidewalks, as people have mentioned, and better access to transit stops, helping pedestrians and users of mass transit to use the corridor safely. There's a recommendation, Number Seven, of reducing target speeds on Veers Mill that will change the outcomes of any future crashes to significantly reduce harm resulting from those. Vision Zero strives to eliminate the number of crashes overall and reduce harm from crashes. The council can take a huge step tonight towards remaking this corridor so that the epidemic level of deaths and serious injuries from crashes involving cars is eventually reduced to zero. We salute the hard work that the planning staff has done over the last couple of years and affirm, we hope you will affirm the value of that work by approving this master plan.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. Suzanne Casa.
Hello. I'm adding just another voice to the very overwhelming support here, it seems, for the master plan. I've been a resident in the Veers Mill Corridor for about six years now, and I have watched the same safety issues that others have already mentioned in very poignant detail. It's not safe to walk along the road. It's not, I wouldn't even consider riding along the road on a bike. But you do have to walk along the road sometimes, especially if you want to access public transportation, use the metro. There are bike racks at the metro, which I can't imagine how you would get there on a bike. I would like to do so, and this plan would make that happen. So, I just, you know, wanted to add another voice to all the support for this plan. I also wanted to voice appreciation for the way that the plan was designed. It was a lot of public input. I went to many of the meetings that gathered the input. We could tell that people were very responsive to what we were saying, especially about the safety concerns, and that's obviously been incorporated into the plan. So, thank you all, and thank you for those who actually worked on developing that plan.
Thank you so much for being here. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Group E. We have Gregory Campbell, Heidi Coleman, Kristi Daphnis, Karen Grises, Jennifer Broom, and Dan Thompson. Mr. Campbell.
Good evening. My name is Greg Campbell, and I'm speaking on behalf of two adjacent properties owned by my family at twelve-six-oh-seven and twelve-six-fifteen Veers Mill Road, just north of Robindale Drive and adjacent to St. Jude's Church. I'm here before you to request a zoning change to CRN 1.5, C 0.0, R 1.5, and H 45 at these properties, which collectively comprise just over two acres. The corridor plan otherwise proposes to maintain the current R60 zoning for now, and modestly increased height and density under this CRN zone will support tasteful townhouse neighborhood in appropriate area, Veers Mill Road next to an institutional church, and across from multifamily complex. Townhouses would provide the diverse missing middle housing types and ensure appropriate transitions to existing residential scale as desired by the proposed plan. This increase in density is particularly appropriate near the proposed bus rapid transit stop at Robindale Drive right in front of the property. The properties have been in our family for over a hundred years. My wife Debbie and I have raised our five kids there. My mom was born and raised there with her family. I'll just skip through some of this. We never considered a zoning change, but my mom passed away last June, right before her ninetieth birthday. My mom really welcomed the growth in the neighborhood in the sixties as a transition from a family farm and was lifelong friends with many of the new neighbors there. She was surprised by a lot of the growth, but really enjoyed raising family, and she would enjoy seeing young families have a chance to buy a house and raise their families on the same land. We would like to see, you know, a change in density which would make this possible for low-income people. And my wife and I recently, since passing of my mother, are also considering selling our property, which the rezoning would allow for this redevelopment. We hope the planning board will agree in supporting this CRN zoning in the county council the same, of course. It's consistent with the corridor plan's objectives and provides opportunity to fulfill the needs for housing diversity and reasonable density along the corridor. Townhouse proposal aligns perfectly with the BRT and the missing middle initiatives. My property, my mother's property, and the other three adjoining properties, if that would be desired by their owners, are a perfect spot to increase density and introduce transitional housing types that are needed in the community without disturbing the residential feel of the single-family neighborhoods. I request the rezoning on behalf of our two properties, but respectfully encourage the planning board and the county council to consider rezoning all five properties between St. Jude's Church and Robindale Drive to the same CRN zone at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Campbell. So sorry for your loss, and really appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much.
Heidi Coleman.
Good evening. My name is Heidi Coleman. I've lived in Silver Springs since nineteen eighty. I serve as vice chair of the Montgomery County Pedestrian, Bicycle, and Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, and I volunteer with WABA. I recently retired following a thirty-five-year career with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration at the U.S. Department of Transportation. I'm speaking in support of the Veers Mill Corridor Master Plan. As you know, in February two thousand sixteen, the county council adopted Vision Zero, becoming the first county in the U.S. to do so. And in November two thousand seventeen, the county issued a two-year Vision Zero plan with the goal of experiencing no annual traffic deaths in Montgomery County by two thousand thirty. Of course, adopting a two-year plan is only the first step. Montgomery County will not be able to eliminate traffic fatalities by two thousand thirty simply by doing the same old thing, or even by doing more of the same. And in fact, pedestrian deaths and serious injuries went up, not down, this year. To achieve the ambitious goals that have been set, we need to make meaningful steps toward change. We must create a safe system, and this will require careful, thoughtful, well-informed planning. Adoption of the Veers Mill Corridor Master Plan is one such step. These documents, the document carefully examines the very real dangers that are present on Veers Mill Road Corridor and strategically and comprehensively examine opportunities to improve the infrastructure and environment along the segment to prevent further serious injuries and deaths from occurring in the future. More often, the document contains many critical, specific elements, including lowering speed limits, controlling speeds, improving pedestrian and bicycle crossings, improving the safety of bus stops, installing separated bike lanes, employing sophisticated signals and lighting, and more. The Planning Department should be commended for applying a Vision Zero approach to its work. The county council should approve the master plan. Moreover, the plan should serve as a model for all transportation master plans that are developed in the future, and I hope it will be funded as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kristi Daphnis.
Hello. I'm Kristi Daphnis. I'm the chair of the Montgomery County Pedestrian, Bicycle, and Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, also a resident of Wheaton Hills, a neighborhood off of Veers Mill Road near the intersection of Veers Mill and Newport Mill. The PPT SAC, as you all know, has taken a keen interest in the development of the Veers Mill Master Plan and strongly supports its adoption, particularly with regard to the roadway transit, pedestrian, and bicycle features included in the plan. This position is consistent with previous communications and recommendations that PPT SAC has had with the council, which requested that you all designate the Veers Mill Corridor as a Vision Zero corridor officially. We think that by doing that, it could raise awareness of Vision Zero and also provide an example and greater awareness of what Vision Zero would look like in practice. In addition to the plan adoption, we're hoping that the council can also consider ways to accelerate its implementation. As outlined in our August recommendation to y'all, which I've given you a copy of, and also as echoed by recommendations from local PTAs, the Planning Board, and other civic advocacy group, there are areas along Veers Mill Road that need immediate attention to provide safe pedestrian and transit facilities for our children and for our residents. to provide safe pedestrian and transit facilities for our children and for our residents. In future proceedings, we ask that the council consider taking action in the following areas. First, requesting a firm commitment from the State Highway Administration to authorize and fund certain improvements along Veers Mill. Specifically, this could include designation of relevant segments along Veers Mill Road as school zones and requisite interventions within those segments. For example, lowering speed limits and authorization of automated enforcement, like speed cameras and red light cameras. Also, installation of a signal at the intersection of Veers Mill and Norris Drive, which is a well-worn path for our middle school and high school students going to Newport Mill and Einstein. Second, we ask that the council pursue and secure funding for targeted interventions along the corridor, namely a continuous sidewalk, where no sidewalk exists now, along the south side of Veers Mill Road between Pendleton and Schoolhouse Circle. This area sits along one of the busiest bus routes in the state of Maryland, and to this end, we recommend the council consider offering amendments to the county's capital improvement program to fill any gaps for which the state funding is unavailable. We appreciate the council's attention and partnership on important pedestrian, bike, and traffic safety issues across the county. We look forward to looking, working aside you in implementing this plan, particularly considering that the communities around Veers Mill Road are disproportionately impacted by pedestrian safety issues and pedestrian bicyclist deaths. My children's elementary school is an elementary school with over 50% ESL, over 80% free and reduced meals. It's a community that uses these buses, that needs these sidewalks, and that deserves to have the attention and the funding and the implementation of these very important safety features.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Karen Grises.
Good evening, President Navarro and members of council. My name's Karen Grisay, and I'm speaking tonight in support of the recommendation for the zoning change for the two properties at 12607 and 12615 Veers Mill Road between St. Jude's Church and Robindale Drive. And it was my brother Greg that's the owner of the 12615 piece, the old farmhouse piece that I think you all saw on your tour yesterday or within recent days. I'm speaking on behalf of the trust that is the current owner of 12607, the red brick Cape Cod that my mother lived in from the time it was built until 1952 until her death about 18 months ago. I guess my remarks really come down to the theme of change in the neighborhood. That property has been in the family since 1904. Originally, it was not only those two properties, but all the way back through the area that's now known as Wheaton Woods, almost back to Wheaton Woods Elementary School and to the south down to Turkey Branch, which you were hearing about earlier this evening. So when my mom was growing up on the property next door, there were, there was a barn and farm animals and an orchard next door and a chicken house, and even when I was a little girl, some of that was still there. The neighborhood changed, and when she got her piece, when my mom got her piece and built her house in 52, they had a lot of the acreage to the back. Originally, that, later that turned into a subdivision. That property had to change. The neighborhood changed around it. Nobody thought in our family about any kind of zoning change. Certainly, my mother didn't either, and she was perfectly happy living right where she was until the time of her death. It was really when she passed away and we needed to get an appraisal of the property to move on with disposition of the estate that we found out the property is no longer at all currently, no longer suitable for the current zoning. No farm, no chicken house, but still not appropriate for the situation today. The appraiser said it was impossible to appraise the property, that there were no comps anywhere in the neighborhood, no potential purchaser would ever use it for a single-family house. The driveway that we knew to be difficult for access to Veers Mill Road was classified as basically impossible, and that the Rock Creek Terrace high-rise across the street had changed the character of the neighborhood so much that it was really no longer appropriate for single-family use. So that took us to the planning board, extensive work with Ms. McVario on the staff who's here tonight, and other planning board members, and a period of time trying to figure out what to do next. So this loss that was terrible for us turned out to be fortuitous, I think, from the county's perspective, because it's leading at least this one and potentially more than one property to come on the market at the exact time when the county's looking to address the need for the missing middle and to make transportation changes in the area. So rather than the current R60, the modestly increased height and density under the CRN would allow for residential development, more appropriate for the neighborhood. Thank you. And let it serve families while still meeting the needs of the county.
Thank you so much. We'll take that into consideration. Okay, Jennifer Broom.
Thank you. Thanks for coming here for the meeting. It's nice.
I'm, I live. I'm sorry. Jennifer Broom, yeah. Jennifer actually was next. You will be after Ms. Broom.
Yeah, I guess that wasn't Dan.
No, I'm not Dan. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Broom, and I'm here as a resident of the Town and Country Townhouse Community off of Veers Mill Road, near Norris Drive, and as a member of the No More Dead Peds, to advocate for prioritizing pedestrians and access to mass transit on the Veers Mill Road corridor. As someone who walks to and from the bus stop and the Wheaton Metro Station every day to go to work in downtown DC, I believe the corridor plan must prioritize the needs and safety of pedestrians above other transportation methods, especially within walking distance of bus stops and the metro station. I urge the council to approve the corridor plan, but also not to wait for the full rollout of this corridor plan to make any number of simple but effective and inexpensive improvements to increase pedestrian safety. These could include implementing no right turns on red, automatic crosslights, improved sidewalks, and more clearly defined crosswalks, and perhaps most importantly, reducing speed on Veers Mill Road. These are all things that with the leadership of this council could be implemented with immediate effect. Additionally, this plan must also address safe pedestrian access to bus stops on both sides of Veers Mill Road. Currently, where the closest bus stops are to my home, there is no legal way for me to cross the street to get to or from the bus stop in my home. So every day, I'm forced to take my life into my own hands and dart out into traffic on Veers Mill Road just to get home. This can be a frightening experience, especially in the evenings on my way home in the dark. I would not do this if I had a legal way to cross, to safely cross the street, but that does not currently exist, and I'm not the only resident who is in the same situation. Every day when I do this, there are other multiple people on the street with me crossing this way as well. Finally, one last note is that the actual implementation of this plan must be well-managed down to the smallest detail, because from the viewpoint of a pedestrian, it's the small things that matter. For example, when the sidewalks were recently repaired at University Boulevard and Veers Mill Road, as well as at Grand View and Veers Mill Road closer to the Wheaton Metro Stop, the corner sections were intentionally left open for what I assume was grass, but their placement was exactly in the footpaths of normal pedestrian traffic, and as a result, instead of grass, they are simply mud pits. So you have to walk out into the street to walk around them. These are the details that are after, that are often afterthoughts, but they are critically important at the pedestrian level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Dan Thompson.
So I live in Wheaton Hills since, for 16 years, and that would, for this plan, that would be from Galt to Newport Mill, and so I'm just thinking of that parochial interest. I love the plan's vision for the parallel activities for pedestrians and bikes, but the thing that will make this succeed is the crossings. Otherwise, we do have a river that divides these communities. It divides Kensington from Wheaton if we can't get over to the fields behind Einstein. So I'm concerned about the crossing, the protected crossing recommended for Norris, right above Newport Mill, and at Galt. And as was said by a previous speaker, high school and middle school students cross at Norris, and they are impatient. They take chances. They will wait for an opening and dart across the street, and they also have to navigate the fact that there are cars making left turns, cars making U-turns who've gotten gas at a free state. It's a very dangerous place. I think the tendency is to put in a hawk or some, less than a full traffic light, and I encourage you to go all the way at this intersection. You'll say, oh, it's so close to Newport Mill. Why? Well, you need it because at least the traffic light, the kids might wait, but if it's a hawk, they're not going to wait. They're just going to dart across. Now, you're all, now, turning to Galt, it's a nightmare, and I'm sure anyone who's gone to get free state gas knows what that is like, and this is not something that should wait for the master plan to be put in place. It should have had a light there a long time ago. If you're coming out of Galt onto Veers Mill Road, you can't see the cars coming up Veers Mill, because what this map doesn't show is there's a hill. The map is flat, but in reality, we have a big hill there, and you cannot see traffic coming up Veers Mill Road as you turn out onto it from Galt. And the same way, cars lined up at University or like starting at Indianapolis 500, they're ready to get out of Wheaton, they've been slowed down, and now they want to head to Rockville. And if you're down there at Newport Mill, they come down that hill and they're flying. So I think we need two lights, one at Galt and one at Norris, and it's too long a stretch. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, now, we're on to Group F, and before we do that, Councilman Jawando, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, since you're still here, thank Mr. Campbell and Ms. Greasy, if I'm pronouncing that, I'm sorry. Okay, for your, for your testimony, I'm sorry for your loss. Thank you for the history that you provided. We did visit those spots yesterday, or the day, day before, the days of running together, but recently, and I also want to commend you for your vision for understanding that we're all in a community and we want to help each other here, and we're transitioning and we're at a different place, and you guys encapsulated Montgomery County for the last 100 years from rural, suburban, urban, and that whole transition, and just commend you for being a participant with our planning staff and open to doing this. And I think it's a model, I think there's a lot of places in the county where we can look to do this, where there's those types of homes that were formerly for a different era, and we can upgrade to not only help with housing, but also help with traffic and pedestrian safety. And so I just wanted to commend you for that and thank our planning staff for working with you, and thank you for everyone who's testified tonight, because this is probably going to be the only time I speak. So this was a great hearing. I hope you enjoyed it, us coming out to the community. Thank you.
Okay. Group F, Jason Fabritz, Sean Corbett, Brunila Marilis Lugo de Favorites, Joyce Thomas, Godofredo Chirinos, and Judy Tankersley. Okay, Mr. Fabritz.
Good evening. My name is Jason Fabritz, and I live on Ilford Road, a property within the Connecticut-Randolph District plan boundary. I would like to thank the planning department and board for its efforts and outreach over the past two years in the development of this plan. There's much to be celebrated. However, given my time constraints, I must highlight a few objections to the recommendations that will have a negative impact on my neighborhood. I wish to call out my objection to the sheer density of the rezoning proposed for the Connecticut-Randolph District, and specifically the redevelopment of the Recreation Office's property at two heights of 65 feet, a sizable win for a lucky developer. The plan calls for the concentration of development and intensity along major roads. In this case, that would be Randolph Road. This could result in a six-story building roughly 250 feet from my property. This is not something I would consider a thoughtful transition from a neighborhood of single-family detached homes. The transition is even more abrupt for homeowners along the east side of Bushy Drive. These height limits should be lowered to facilitate a more reasonable transition towards the proposed higher-density commercial core. Furthermore, I ask the council to refrain from disposing of the property in the first place. Once that property is gone, it will be difficult to find additional property elsewhere for public uses such as parks, community centers, and our schools. I must point out that presently, the, an entire grade of students at the nearest grade school, Sergeant Shriver Elementary, attend classes in portable trailers. How is infilling this property with hundreds of households going to ease that pain? This property should be in consideration for a public use, not for a developer's windfall. I realize the plan attempts to facilitate the missing middle housing in the corridor in the intent of developing this property would conceptually reach towards that objective. However, I must point out that the marketplace is already solving this issue, and unfortunately, in a way that is detrimental to the quality of life in our neighborhood. Too many single-family structures on our street already house multiple households. As you can see from the photos taken Tuesday evening, this has led to overcrowding on our street, with multiple cars parked across driveway entrances, sidewalks, and off the pavement ripping up yards. A six-story apartment or stacked townhomes two blocks away from this will not relieve this situation. Given the market pressures in the neighborhood, I believe that new development will quickly fill beyond its intended design capacity, and despite all development being adequately parked in a legal sense, additional vehicles will spill into our neighborhood and onto our streets, and there will be more children in temporary trailers. Learning. I also have some comments about the transportation portion of the plan, but I'll leave them in, leave them for writing for your consideration at your leisure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Sean Corbett.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to provide input for the plan tonight and for doing this here. I didn't have to drive all the way down Veers Mill Road to Rockville. My name is Sean Corbett, and I'm the president of Wheaton Hills Civic Association. Our neighborhood sits at the eastern end of the area covering the plan from Galt Avenue to Claridge Road with a significant part of our homes within the plan boundaries. The Veers Mill Master Plan, if approved, funded, and followed through on, represents smart substantive improvements to this major roadway and its surrounding communities and environments. I want to highlight a couple of specific recommendations from the plan that have a direct and tangible impact on our neighborhood, all in positive ways, if implemented thoughtfully. A large number of students, as we've heard, to Newport Mill Middle School and Einstein High School cross Veers Mill Road on a daily basis. Too many do so at unmarked natural crossings where residential streets intersect Veers Mill. The plan calls for implementing a school speed zone, adding sidewalks, speed cameras, and placing in protected crossings at Norris Drive and Galt Avenue. We fully support these measures, as well as the inclusion of a red light camera on Veers Mill at Newport Mill Road. This master plan's commitment to realizing Vision Zero is to be commended, as is its integration with the bicycle master plan. The plan touches on, and I'd like to reiterate, the need for a comprehensive evaluation of stormwater management and rainwater capture along Veers Mill. Aging neighborhoods like ours have an inadequate number of drainage inlets, and full implementation of the plan will likely add additional impervious surface, increasing runoff to Joseph's Run, the environmentally compromised stream that intersects our neighborhood and flows into the recently renovated Wheaton Claridge Park. Lastly, I wanted to express my gratitude to the planning board for the level of community outreach and engagement conducted throughout the development process for this plan. When the Wheaton Civic, Wheaton Hills Civic Association asked the board to come to one of our community meetings and talk about what they do, they framed it in terms of this plan leading to greater community engagement and interest, so kudos to the board for that. As a community bounded by three sides, on three sides by state highways, Georgia Avenue, University Boulevard, and Veers Mill Road, Wheaton Hills is particularly sensitive to the conditions and impacts of these thoroughfares. The vision expressed in the Veers Mill Master Plan as a complete street concept, purposefully designed and zoned to connect neighborhoods and communities through improved pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and transit, is a model to be expanded upon county-wide. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming out. Brunila Marilis Lugo de Favorites.
Hi, my name's Marilis Lugo de Favorites. I am here to talk about, you guessed it, school stuff, because you always see me for school stuff, right? And new ones, hi, you'll get to know me. I do a lot of school stuff. I used to be treasurer at Sergeant Shriver Elementary, and I'm currently delegate at Northwood High School, and I am here to talk about some of the ways that the changes proposed by the corridor plan will help to enhance inequities already present for our children in the Down County Consortium system. And think about the Down County Consortium. It has managed to become an effective educational network, and think network, for our children. It allows them to pursue academic interests ranging from bioengineering to the CAP program at Blair, to IBM Visual Arts at Einstein, to MC squared at Northwood. For this network to work, however, we need to navigate the transportation needs of our children to actually access these resources. The main connector for most of these schools is the Veers Mill Corridor, particularly for Northwood. We're looking at New Northwood being built, and our students possibly being put at Woodward, and the way they'll be getting back and forth from there is, you guessed it, Veers Mill. Right now, that's a two-and-a-half-hour metro bus ride. Just check it out. It's really mind-blowing how not to get there on metro. So the main connector is Veers Mill. Our home school is Sergeant Shriver, more than 800 children, 80% farms, and over 200 of them right now in portables. A lot of us have children in multiple schools, and being able to drive to different places up and down the corridor is essential to access resources spread among different schools and keep our jobs and pay our rent. In the last few months, I have driven to Parkland Middle, Northwood High School, Blair High School, and Sherwood High School. All of these are within a 15-minute drive of our house, but require over an hour when using public transportation, except for Sherwood. That's, you gotta do. That's, you gotta do two buses, and that one's more like an hour and a half. Um, so, reducing speed and capacity will make it harder for our children, some of the needed students in our county, to fully access the range of opportunities MCPS has worked so hard to offer them. Furthermore, I wonder at the wisdom of turning the county parks building in Randolph into high-rise apartments when MCPS is desperately kind of looking for more school space, and I just read it was a decommissioned school. Um, yeah. I cannot see adding more students, more portables, more obstacles for students to access their educational and career opportunities. And last but not least, um, I've got a link to a cool blog about, um, planning equity in urban planning, where they observe that if we do not incorporate issues of equity into public transit, we not only bake existing inequalities into the future structure of our cities and regions, we maximize, rather than minimize, damaging effects on our society. This plan seems to, like, one that has taken our neighborhood as an engineering problem with one ideal solution, and it's not. It is assuming that there are transportation options that do not exist and will not exist, um, and thus cannot, fortunately, you cannot substitute for mom carpool from one event to the other or as the main tools for academic achievement.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Joyce Thomas?
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the council for inviting me to have an opportunity to present some concerns that, that I have. Basically, everyone has basically said almost the same thing in terms of safety, in terms of, uh, lighting, uh, you know, traffic lights, et cetera, and the, the drivers who drive their cars the way they feel. Uh, I'm particularly concerned about, um, I'm particularly concerned about the crosswalk at, um, from Veers Mill Road near Center Hill and Andrews Street. Andrews and Center Hill are both one-way streets. Center Hill has a, um, shelter on the east side of Veers Mill Road. There is no walkway from Center Hill to the opposite side of Veers Mill Road. So, if someone is running down the hill from Center Hill on the, is it the north or the south side, going to catch the bus going toward the Westfield Shopping Center, they have to dash across the street. Uh, and it's very dangerous. Actually, it was only yesterday that I saw three teenagers just darting at the aisle of Andrews Street, uh, going toward the opposite side of Veers Mill to catch the bus, and it was like I had to hold my breath because I didn't know if the car was going to hit them or what. So, I'm suggesting that there be a crosswalk placed at, um, Center Hill, which goes directly across the street to the, um, the shelter, and perhaps not put a crosswalk at Andrews, where there's also a tree and some concrete, which means that it would be, it would cost to have that renovated to put a, to put a crosswalk at that particular spot. Um, I'd also like to mention that there is not a street sign at Center Hill, so if you're driving, going toward Connecticut Avenue, there's no Center Hill sign. Many times, I think accidents are caused because the drivers cannot see the street at night, and they slow down and they get rear-ended many times. I'm happy to say also that for, and this has been several years now, but as a result of the traffic light that is now at Claridge Road and Veers Mill, a delicate car was quite instrumental in helping the, uh, association that I'm with, Montclair Manor Homeowners' Association, the Connecticut Avenue Estates Civic Association.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Yeah, you are finished. We will take into consideration the rest of your testimony. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Uh-huh. Godofredo Chirinos?
Señora Presidente, buenas noches. Miembros del Consejo, buenas noches. Yo tengo que felicitarlos porque yo asisto desde el 2017 a estas reuniones. Creo que estuve en cinco ocasiones y vengo a esta última donde ya se cristaliza y veo que esto ya es una realidad. Indudablemente estamos ante un tema de salud pública que beneficia a la comunidad, y esto tiene que estar de la mano con una educación para la salud.
Uh, this, this, yep. Um, council members, thank you for having me this evening. Um, I have been coming to these council meetings since the nineteen-sixties, and I have to say, um-
No, for two years. He says he's been coming, uh, yeah, for two, since two thousand seventeen, and he says that it's, yeah, and he, um, right. He was saying that, um, he has to congratulate us because finally, a lot of these issues are becoming a reality, and there's a need to address issues that affect health and public health.
Bueno, les decía que el tema de educación para la salud es muy importante porque indudablemente hemos escuchado tantos casos de seguridad que esto no sería factible si es que estas ciclovías, porque así va a ser, se transforme en una ciclovía totalmente segura con todas las instancias que están solicitando las personas que han hablado.
Um, he said that he has been heard, he, hearing a lot about, um, eh, the plan, and, but now he is happy that he, he sees it, please correct me, council member, but like he, he, um, he's that final is narrowing, narrowing down to the point in which, um, he's actually going to see the cycle, ciclovías.
Yo lo puedo hacer.
Okay, good afternoon.
Right, so, uh, part of what he's saying is that, um, he has now seen that we're getting to a point where we're addressing the issues of safe roads and addressing many treatments in order to achieve, um, a lot of safer roads.
Al poner en marcha este corredor, sé que ustedes están buscando el bienestar de la persona, y eso es muy saludable. Por consiguiente, solamente ya para terminar, porque el tiempo nos ha ganado, eh, a este corredor que de lunes a sábado estaría funcionando, eh, en el transporte público y en el transporte no motorizado, que es lo esencial que va a tener, sería bueno que el fin de semana, dado que cada vez son más escasas las, eh, los campos, las, las acciones recreativas, eh, no porque no se tengan en cuenta, sino porque, eh, no se ha hecho mucha infraestructura, se tenga una ciclovía recreativa, donde toda la familia salga en sus vehículos no motorizados y tengan las cuatro millas a su disposición desde las siete a una de la tarde, tal como se usa en otros países, y yo creo que Montgomery tiene que estar al día en esto también. Gracias. Muy buenas noches.
Muchas gracias. So, uh, one of the recommendations that he's making, um, has to do with the ability to dedicate certain lanes, maybe on the weekends, uh, for non-motorized, uh, you know, use, so whether it's bike lanes, et cetera, so the families can, uh, on the weekends, uh, enjoy, uh, being able to utilize those, um, you know, dedicated lanes for that kind of use, and it's something that he says has been used in other countries, and he thinks that Montgomery County could be a really wonderful place, um, to do so. Muchas gracias. Uh, Judy Tankersley, I think I'm pronouncing that sort of correctly.
Very close. Tankersley, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the plan, and I know you're all happy to see me as the, the last person to speak, no matter what I say. Uh, just wanted to say that certainly, I, along with every, many other people who have already spoken, we welcome the attention and the improvements to basic safety, basic sidewalks, crosswalks that are, uh, contained in the plan. On the other hand, I have serious questions in my mind about the overall plan. I have some concerns about it based on the overall approach that appears to amend multiple master plans in significant ways through a subject-oriented approach, the corridor plan, the bicycle plan, the pedestrian plan, that leaves communities modified and changed in ways that preclude understanding the effects of those plans on the communities. How can local community needs be respected, recognized, and valued when an overall plan, implemented over time, dictates an approach that bakes in multiple requirements? I'm also struck by the repeated references to maintaining the nature of the area in the study as single-family residences. Despite that mantra, this plan supports zoning changes to allow for higher-density requirements along the corridor, at proposed BRT stops no less, and in commercial areas to allow for mixed housing use. Seems to me that older Down County and Mid County communities face many pressures from such nibbling away of zoning areas and the protections they provide. These suburban areas have provided affordable, varied neighborhoods for sixty or more years. They've changed with the changing demographics. They should not be downgraded by planning decisions that make them unattractive as long-term residents, residences, or allow them to become problems when density adds to the issues that deteriorate the quality of life in those neighborhoods. I note that much of the discussion in the plan indicates that the bus rapid transit drives, drives the need for much of the rezoning proposals. BRT is a project that sounds good, but on this corridor, already well-served by transit, it appears to have limited usefulness. Again, one must ask if the needs of the adjacent residential neighborhoods were any part of the consideration, or are they only a considered, only considered as a source of ridership in order to make BRT viable? I believe this corridor plan carries too many assumptions that are questionable now with too many serious implications for the neighborhoods surrounding Veers Mill Road to be acceptable as is without serious editing.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Um, and so, with that, we conclude our tonight's, uh, public hearing. I want to, um, I want to thank, uh, council staff that made this happen so quickly. I want to thank my office staff also for doing a lot of, uh, work, uh, to get us here, the planning staff, uh, for all their extraordinary work, uh, for this plan. Uh, I want to thank the Planning Board for, uh, really, you know, going through this and sending us what I think it's, it's a really incredible, um, product, and so, Mr. Casey Anderson, Ms. Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, who are here representing, uh, the Planning Board, thank you. And also Holiday Park for hosting us tonight, and all of you for staying here until this late hour. So, um, that concludes our plan, and, uh, our Fed Committee is going to start working very soon. So, now it's on, in their hands. Thank you so much.